All right, thank you very much. This is relatively painful, I mean painless. First on the agenda, we have the continuation of the site plan application submitted by Matthew and Kelly Leclerc for a proposed gravel parking lot. Wait, am I saying it wrong? Nope, that's the wrong one, right?
Yeah, this is-
That's Leclerc's.
Leclerc is the new one.
Okay, is this public hearing? We need to open a public hearing just for review right now?
Yeah, we need to open a public hearing and then we just need to continue.
Do we have the advertising for such?
You have everything right in front of you. It should go in order by bundle.
Okay, all right, so I thought we'd jump onto... We're doing it backwards, okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I'll just read it. "To all persons deemed interested in the planning board acting under the town of Templeton by law section eight point four site plan review, you are hereby notified of a public hearing to be held on June eleventh twenty nineteen six thirty P M in the Templeton Town Office, one sixty Patriots Road, East Templeton. To consider a site plan application submitted by Matthew and Kelly Leclerc for proposed gravel parking lot located at map and parcel number two dash twelve point two three. Parking to be used at proposed event pavilion. Subject property is located within the residential agricultural two district. All parties who wish to be heard shall be heard. All relevant documents reviewed are located in the office of the planning board, yada yada here. For further information, call the planning board office." Kirk Wachette, Chair, that's me. I'll entertain a motion to open this public hearing, the site plan review.
Motion that we open the public hearing.
Seconded?
Oh, it's all seconded.
To open, okay. All in favor, open your hearing. Unanimous?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, the applicants, Jamie, have you had correspondence with this?
Yes.
Okay. James Rowe is from Whitman and Bingham Associates, just for people who don't know, he's our peer review agent on planning board issues. And so, he's been in contact with the applicants while let you take it from here.
Yeah, so I received a copy of the site plan by Zoc surveyors and Karen. Good looking plan. The only problem is it's conceptual in nature and it's not stamped by a P E. So, I did have a conversation with Brian. And Brian called Chris Mossman, Trailbridge Engineering out of Westminster, to take the project on. Chris called me today and said he's going to be doing the plan, but hasn't started it yet. He'll get me the plan and I'll do the peer review hopefully for the next meeting.
Okay.
But again, it's all dependent upon when I get the plan.
Okay, so with that being said, we're just going to, from the applicant's wording from you, right? They wish for us just to continue the public hearing, which we will do. Our next meeting is the twenty fifth?
I'm not gonna be here, but we'll have someone to cover.
So, that's our regularly scheduled meeting is June twenty fifth, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing. Until June twenty fifth at six thirty.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing till twenty fifth, you said?
Yeah, June twenty fifth.
June forty fifth.
At six thirty. Do we hear a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor, continuing it? Say aye, show your hands, okay, unanimous?
There is some, the department had reviews in there. There was some conflict with crosswalk and stuff. Our highway department isn't gonna allow them to put a crosswalk up. So, I don't know if they pass that information along to you.
That'll get brought up in the review process, okay.
But I've like copies of all of them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so whatever you get, you send it directly to Whitman and Bingham?
Yeah, Carol has your email, okay.
And they have submitted retainage?
Yes, I have, yes.
All right, so that one is on the shelf for now. Okay, continuation, peer review, bunny dairy barn, garden road, gravel parking lot, site plan review. I'll entertain a motion to reopen this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing, the site plan review on the garden road and plant road site.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye, okay. Everybody good? All in favor, open the public hearing, okay. Okay, once again, Mr. Rowe, you guys, your company has handled this. I know you have a report here. Could you chime in on that, Jamie?
Sure, so the last meeting, Hannigan presented the plan to you. You approved the plan, subject to a peer review. And Hannigan Engineering agreed to revise the plan based upon the plan review. This is a new plan to you.
Yeah.
For your records. So, we finished the peer review. There are some issues with some of the calculations and we requested some changes to the plan as well. So, we forwarded this peer review to Hannigan. Hannigan will revise the plan. And again, we'll see you on the twenty fifth with the revised plan and hopefully a sign off. Very simplistic, no fad across.
Okay, so the applicant's engineer and yourself are still tweaking it, so to speak, and feel you'd be ready for a final on the twenty fifth, next hearing? Anybody have any questions on that? The applicants?
No, they're not here.
They're not here, okay. All right, 'cause I think they knew what was going on as far as that goes, okay. So, when they'll, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we-
Continue it.
Continue the hearing until the twenty fifth.
Till the twenty fifth as well. And I guess we'll just stack them all at six thirty.
Yeah, I'll just do a soon thereafter allows on all of those.
Right, so I'll go with six thirty and then of course, you're barring the agenda, okay. Do we hear a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, Carol's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, on that. Jamie, these copies were just for our viewing anyways, correct?
I gave you an original, and copies for the other board members.
Yeah. But this is still gonna need to be tweaked based on the final?
So, they'll, yes, so they'll revise the plan.
To match your comments.
Me submit to the board myself. I'll review it and give you a second retort back on the twenty fifth.
Okay, all right. So, this is just an updated version? I'm just gonna put it back in the stack. You guys can keep those for your reading if you like. Next on, requested addendum to stormwater management plan for Gotta Tea Hanger. Okay, is the applicant present for Gotta Tea Hanger? The applicant's not here.
No.
Were they notified?
I believe Carol notified them. I didn't handle this when Carol did.
This is not a public hearing, this is just a-
A continu- they have a request for-
They just wanna modify it, but have you seen this plan at all?
So, we received the plans.
Yeah.
And we're in the middle of our peer review.
Okay, so we're gonna let it flow. We'll continue also till the twenty fifth, okay. I think it's because you just received the plans, if I'm not mistaken, that's why, right?
Yep, I honestly thought they were gonna be here and then he had to listen to the presentation.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah.
So, I guess we'll do it by plan and then we'll-
I'll make sure we're in contact.
Well, we'll encourage their participation. If they don't agree with Whitman and Bingham, then they need to either-
Okay.
Open a dialogue with them directly till everybody's happy. They don't have to come here and argue in front of us, but until our peer review agents are happy, we're not-
Right.
Sign off on this.
All right, sounds good to me.
So, can I, do you want them to make a presentation to the board?
They don't really, it's not really necessary. I mean, it's usually strongly encouraged, so we can put our two cents in, but if I remember correctly, it's, they're just scaling the project down. As far as from impervious surface, so if anything, it's, it's not like they proposed an acre, now they want to do three. It's actually scaling things down, so I'm assuming that's an easier swallow, 'cause all the other questions have been answered.
I would encourage them to come and make a presentation before, so you know exactly what the deal is.
I would encourage them to be here on the twenty fifth, even if your review is done with them or satisfactory, let's everybody know.
There should be a contact phone number or something somewhere, right?
Okay.
On like the original application?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look for it.
Okay, yeah, oh, well, this is kinda weird. Get it from Whitman and Bingham, 'cause they already have a copy of the plan.
All right.
Contact info. If you get it back to Mallory, for some reason, they just sent it to you directly and they kept us out of the loop. 'Cause it was a dialogue of what do we do?
Okay.
Do we have to come to the board? And so, I strongly encourage it, 'cause they need to okay their downsizing as well as upsizing, so.
Okay.
That's me how it slipped through the cracks.
Awesome.
So, that doesn't need, that doesn't need a motion or anything. We'll just carry it to the next agenda, 'cause it's not a public hearing.
Beautiful. And I'll be in contact with you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, guys, have a good night. That was easy.
Right, that's how we're gonna be here all night.
Thanks for coming. That was the quickest three pack you ever done.
Take care, guys.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a A and R for Carol Curtis on, if I'm not mistaken, does that say Zero Dudley Road?
Yeah, it's right next to One Ross Road. It's, that's my wife Carol, and this is my son Ryan, and I'm Steve Curtis.
Okay.
And we bought both houses, one Ross Road from the bank, and then-
Oh, Ross Road, that's that little dead end on the right, right before Crucial, right after, right before Crucial's old property?
Right before Ed's place.
Yeah.
We bought the house from the bank and we did a bunch of site work, cleaned it up, make it beautiful.
The one closest to the road?
Yeah, and it ended up being so rotten, I had to tear it down.
Bought the house?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
We tried saving it, but we bought it in December and we really couldn't get underneath it. We thought there was a block foundation, 'cause we saw our couple blocks. There was no foundation under the house.
Blocks on dirt.
Yeah, but there was no foundation, just piers every ten feet.
Not that it matters, but is there still a house out back as well?
There is, that's not part of ours, that's-
All right, so this is your plan right here, then?
Yeah, and what we did is we bought the land next door, there was five, four point six acres from Dave Budrow, who was in Florida.
Yeah.
And so, our lot, we have a permit on, is non-conforming, non-conforming, but a buildable lot, 'cause it was an existing house. So, I have plenty of frontage, so I'm making one Ross Road conforming, giving it two point- Two point two acres, and then I'm giving, after I make that conforming, we're giving the amount of frontage needed for Ziri Dudley Road to make that a buildable lot, so we can build a house for my wife and I and a house for my slot. So, both lots will be conforming to your, to the town's-
Let's see what we got for plan here now. Is the-
The surveyor's here.
Do we have the paperwork on this?
Everything should be like towards the bottom, 'cause they put them in order.
I just want you to make sure you have the, could it be the last application?
Yes, sir.
So, both lots would be conforming with acreage, conforming with frontage, and, you know, just meeting your bylaws.
Okay, these have already been checked off by... Oh, they already checked these off. You guys checked these off on the, the part you submitted on the application?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we get a few more we just have to do? So, okay, let's just look at the plans up here, see what we got. Is the MyLAR in here by any chance?
Yes, it is. And I own old time restoration. I restored all this dirt. I did the Templeton Church for the foundation.
That's why you look familiar, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I bought some loom for you. Your father just helped me with a nice door for a beehive oven that I gave to Jimmy Amey, our neighbor in Lynchville. But anyways, this is new to us, building new construction, so it's different.
Did you save the old blocks?
No, they weren't any good, correct.
Can you just, I just wanna slide this out of the way so it doesn't get damaged.
Yeah, it was true. We tried everything to save the house. I tried everything I could, but it was cold. Just wanted to build the whole house.
Okay, so. Thought that we'd enjoy the story.
All right.
Here's the, I see Ross Road.
Yeah, one Ross Road.
Okay, number one, that's the house that's no longer there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so-
We're gonna move the house to the middle of the lot. Frontage is on one Ross Road.
Okay, we're not, where you moved the house, that's a billing, strictly just for the land itself, just so you know, which is, you know, some towns do require to show the exact house where it's going.
Yeah, we don't.
We just do the land and then billing commissioner does the, you know, he's in force or as far as setbacks and so on and so forth. All right, so you're going to be attaching what parcel now? Parcel, what's the one, if you don't mind?
Thank you, guys. What we're doing is, from this lot here, we're giving one Ross Road this acreage to make this lot two acres.
Okay, that sliver right there.
Yep, and then the little pie in the front, we're gonna transfer it to the big lot to give it the frontage. We're gonna put a driveway in and put a nice house right here.
Okay, that makes sense, I'm just trying to-
The previous owner, Budrow.
Yeah.
Subdivided this land and gave part to Crucial, and then-
This is, this is Ross Road.
This was remaining, but at the time, the zoning-
Past Barry Road on the right.
Was already non-conforming.
Just before, just before Eddie Crucial.
So, they created a non-conforming lot.
Set farm, then you kinda go way up to the top of the hill.
So, we're just trying to make it have the frontage.
Just before, just before the field.
Yeah.
So, you did follow our guidelines of nothing less than fifty foot wide.
Yes, sir, two houses before the farm.
This is all, yeah.
Little abandoned road right here, so actually, the land goes back to Moses Leland in eighteen forty.
Basically, this line's being erased.
Yeah, field right here, this is my land.
Land that will take this line out and take that line, so that it'll show-
How long ago was that? Really, yeah. That's amazing, we love it. The land's, this land is beautiful.
Yeah, there's a short story up here.
So, now we'll take a land that was just being-
No, it's self-explanatory.
We got town water and town dirt at the road, and then we'll turn this into a tax-producing, you know?
Okay, is everybody following what they're doing as far as the long wedge going up back goes with lot one? The small wedge in the front-
The frontage is here, though, right?
Yes, it is.
A, Y.
So, this is now one lot?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so once they, their final plan will chill without this line right here.
Yep.
And without this little line right here. So, this little wedge is going with us. This little wedge shows with this.
Yeah, and that'll give us our frontage.
'Cause this frontage is here.
Yeah, one Ross Road.
One Ross Road, right.
Amazing what you can do, just change a few lines.
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, the building inspector helped me, you know, he was, I mean, he's a ten. I wish all the building inspectors were this helpful and, you know, I'm just a small businessman. I'm really trying to get my son a house, and he works at me.
So, you have to tweak a lot?
So, now we made a lot that was non-conforming conforming, and then we took a lot that was nothing and we're gonna make it a tax producer and get a house on it.
All right, have you guys submitted the fee for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Check, yeah, for, how much was it?
Three hundred.
Okay. Give one lot.
What's turning it?
That's Teddy Furz, that's a, that's a house right here. That's nothing to do with us.
Still have access often?
Yeah, yeah, we both, everybody has access on that.
This all becomes part of this, right?
And Crucial does too.
And then Crucial does, because he owns the land over here.
Two six here?
This is it.
Actually, the access-
So, you're three points, so he's at two acres. Now, he'll be at two acres.
I don't know how long his goes.
Oh, what's undersized, so now he'll be at two acres.
With this, he'll be at two acres.
He did follow our guidelines, say no point can be less than fifty feet, which it will be, because this will, I mean, which it won't be, because this line gets erased, so therefore, it's a side boundary.
Well, the side boundaries aren't our issue anyway, so.
What's that?
For building, the side boundaries. Like, I was wondering how a house would fit in there, but really, it's not our, that's not our issue.
It's the determination, because we, we got into it before with, somebody having a big parcel of land, and it jogged all over in the back of the woods. And somebody was trying to call, well, it goes like this, so that's, backless was thirty feet. No, it's basically plain and simple, but it's not a front line and not a back line, it's automatically a sideline. It doesn't matter how they zig and zag. 'Cause, you know what I mean? Otherwise, where's the back of your lot? Is it here? Is it here? Is it here? In other words, it's either front or it's rear, if it's not, it's a side. So, so anyways, it cuts the criteria. So.
Thank you.
With that being said, we're just gonna go through a few things here. Four copies of plans, yes. Okay, identification planned by name of owner, record, and location of land in question.
Yep.
Statement approved under some, yeah, that's a yes, right?
That's a yes.
Okay, B, statement approval under the subdivision control laws not required.
I actually don't see that.
Signature for the signature of four people. Where's your signature lines?
There it is.
Quite a ways away.
Yeah.
Zoning classification, location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the locus. There's no boundaries there, but does it say it's in a RA two zone?
It's RA two.
Does it state it on the plan? It should state it on the plan. I mean, we can waive the formality, because your MyLAR is done.
Yeah, RA two, minimum lies, two acres and the frontages.
Okay, and we can, everybody in favor of waiving that?
We should make a note of that someplace.
I can put it in the minutes.
Yeah, I think if we put it in the minutes, that everybody agreed.
Yeah.
Then I think we'll be good.
I mean, all in favor, are we gonna waiver on that? It's just, I'm just, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna circle, like, it doesn't, it's not there. We're not gonna mark it, that's all. Is everybody fine with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the next. In a case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land and the ownership of the applicable, of the applicant, if any, and that's a yes, right, 'cause they listed where they're going? Steve Curtis?
Yeah.
Ryan Curtis? Carol Ryan Curtis, yes, okay. Notice if any decisions by Z P A is not applicable.
Find a piece of land.
Names of the butters of plan, on plan. Yeah. Yeah, it's right here, Teddy Fur, and Adam Petty Crucial.
This one here?
He's right there.
This is Crucial's line right there, so kinda goes around.
Yeah, okay, we're good. It's on there. Distance of the nearest permanent monument, yeah, there's plenty of them out there. Location of all existing buildings, including setbacks, aside, and rear yard. Designations, yes, they're showing there. Location of any easements or way, public or private, across the land with the designation as to use of the same. It doesn't go across the land, goes up, oh, there is an easement right there, right? What is that fifteen foot easement for?
I don't really know, but it's in the deeds way back, so. It might have been that it was for, for utilities, for Teddy.
Is there anything on it now?
There's nothing. There's actually no way to get anywhere on that.
Used to be a cart road through there.
But that, wouldn't that be off the end of Ross Road? There was one of them.
It might have been Ross Road.
Yeah, but this is on the right hand side. Well, you know, if the easement's there-
The deeds back to eighteen oh seven, mentioned the road going through it, and also a bridle way.
Yeah, okay. Well, you just can't, you just can't build, you just can't build on an easement, right?
Yeah, that's right.
No, right, exactly.
You're gonna, it's yours, whatever do you want, but you can't block it or build on it. We're not the land police, but I do know that's how they look at it. Okay, so it is showing it there, okay. Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the plan that's submitted.
Craig, I put the signature in the blue folder.
I'm sorry, what's that?
There's a spot for a signature in the blue folder. It's up there, the dark blue folder. Should be probably behind the other side.
What are you referring to, Mallory?
There's a spot where Carol said you need to sign.
All in, determination, okay. Yeah, this has to get recorded with the Calhoun Town Clerk. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the plan that's submitted. Second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Slide them all down one way or another. Frank, you want that?
Send the MyLAR down there too, Craig?
Yeah. I'll put the MyLAR right on top, once you guys get them all together. If you're signing it on the, it's up on top. Just be careful with the MyLAR. Make sure there's nothing underneath it when you're signing, it's up on the top of the page. Put it right back, do you, Mallory?
Today, did I know?
Today is the eleventh, I think?
Eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven.
Six eleven. Six eleven.
They'll record it immediately, but, you know, I mean, they'll record it within a week.
I wanna record tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well, just, you'll have to bring it down there.
Craig, there's no waiting periods for A and Rs. Like, when we stamp it, the town clerk stamps it.
There's an in-game turtle.
I think it's actually twenty one days.
Is it?
I'm not positive, though.
Okay.
No, we have twenty one days to render the decision.
Okay.
Once it's recorded, then it's done.
I'll get it all eventually, I'll figure it out.
So, the thing was trying to get off the bridge and bump into the perfect.
Craig, so you guys, I've never done this before. This is all new, I restore old historic buildings. So, you guys sign each one of this, and then it's approved and it's both-
Yeah, the only one, the only one you need is the, is the MyLAR.
Okay, yeah.
We keep, what is it, four for in-house?
Four for in-house.
We keep four for in-house, you know, distribution, all of that. The MyLAR is your most important one.
Sure, and then I bring that to the registry.
Registry deeds yourself or your engineer just records it. Whatever, whatever you do, don't kink it.
Yep, that's what they say.
Don't kink it or bend it.
Yep, okay.
This is so interesting. I know you guys deal with it all the time, but when you restore old historic buildings, this is a whole new ballgame for us. And I took a lot of land that was just useless, and because I owned the one Ross Road, I could make this land doable.
You got your tube left over there?
So, look, this is what we do now.
Oh, yeah.
Just gonna make sure it dries a little bit thirsty.
Okay, great, thank you. Remember last year, you sold all that, my, uh-
Winston, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They'll still have an easement. You know, I'm wondering, it's like, if the easement was to serve this.
Don't open it, then get to the registry, seriously.
I won't, don't worry. I don't wanna mess with her.
Just don't put that on, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
All right, you're welcome.
Oh, my goodness.
That's all he needs is a MyLAR, he doesn't need-
He gets one of these, though.
Yeah, I think they give one paper copy last time, Trevor.
How many do we have? Five?
Yeah, there's five there.
Okay.
Do I do anything with you, or are we done?
Are you just recording the registry deeds?
Yeah.
Once it's recorded, then it's permanent record. If you ever need a copy of it, you just go right on the registry deeds website, and you can print it, and it'll have, it'll, it's a photo, they'll, they'll microfilm that, is what they do, so it's there forever. For eternity. I remember the, the old registry in Worcester. Talking about archives. You get down there, you could smell the history. Yeah. I go down there, research properties all the way back to the King's Grant.
That's really cool.
Yeah, I mean, it's really something else.
They jumped to sixty seven degrees. Not now, right now it's seventy five, but it was sixty seven.
Seventeen hundreds, property and royalty.
Eighteen oh seven, that was the original.
King's Grant.
And the Ross, the Ross Road was there then. And it also, but it was, it was a-
Mindful if I turned zero.
It was, it might have been a private road, and then it became a town road.
It would have gone to a county road, the town, the towns, if the town would have accepted it, then it would still be a town road.
You have an electric pump from there, it's not, so it may have, may have gone to like a county road for way back state buggy kind of thing, you know?
All the deeds and the change title for this property.
That's, I mean, who knows, could have been abandoned in the fifties, you know?
Moses Leland.
Cleveland, yes.
There used to be a sawmill on the other end of.
Yeah, he's the one that, um, he owned basically that whole side of town over there.
Yeah, it's really hard, what you do is you trace the name, but then.
Usually they go back to military, with the King's Grant, where the king gave them.
Have a good night.
I don't think, Steve, I don't think I signed that one.
Sorry, I signed it in a second.
Kirk got a little, got a little.
Brother who does the excavator, is that a family member?
It's my son.
It's his son, yeah, he just did a, we had a vine in Winchester, and he just did the perch that for us.
Yep. Right. Usually we get Frank to fold them.
Frank folds them?
That's been the tradition for years.
Alright, lock them down.
He gets, that one's yours.
Okay, guys. Just remember, if you do another one in Teflon, you have to put the zone on them, on, on the plan.
Yeah.
Let's hope not.
No, that's right.
Thank you Frank.
Out of all the things you can forget, that's the least of the evils, do you know what I mean? Yeah, 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 no, it's good, I'm not gonna send you back for a mile hour and all that, just for that, so, we're good. Alright, you're welcome. Casey, working on one?
I like to trace the story of boundaries, uh, the only reason why we did this, is because he wanted to purchase in the land next door, and when Budrow subdivided it. He left the non-building lot.
Yeah, yeah, landlord.
So at first I thought, well, if it's existing, and non-conforming, there shouldn't be any problems, but then I looked up the plan that.
It wasn't done long enough ago.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago, and when they subdivided it, they left it with, I don't know. At first I thought, why don't we just trade, you know, we got a lot of acres, why don't we just get less footage and a lot of acres?
Non-desirable, but that's the way it works, I mean, it's just following the letter of the law, so, very good, thank you sir, appreciate it.
Yeah, very, very good, thank you.
Okay, guys, we got the minutes from, uh, May twenty eighth. Alright, totally forgot about that marijuana cultivation, uh, meeting I had, how'd it go?
It was okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there's. It's on, it's on YouTube, if you wanna watch it.
What's that?
It's on YouTube.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
I'm gonna approve them anyway, because I was here.
John makes a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? All opposed? Dennis, you interrupt? Okay, unanimous?
I'm gonna have you start signing as a clerk, that they've been approved, cause you've been, should have been doing that. That's a lot they get filed with the town's clerk.
Okay, then we have this. Review open space letter. To Carrie Novak, Chairperson, Teflon Open Space Committee, Teflon Planning Board. The members of the Teflon Planning Board have had the opportunity to review the recently completed, updated. Updating of the town's open space plan, and are in agreement with its content. Copy of the plan has been placed in the board's office for future reference. Sincerely, me. Um, all in favor of signing this letter?
Yep.
Okay, and then, um. New, new business, Dennis, don't you have to be?
Can you just sign that copy for the board's record?
What I hear, am I missing it, don't you need to be nominated by this board to be on one of the committees you wanna be on?
Oh yeah, on the.
See, you forgot to bring it up.
Community Preservation Committee.
Okay.
Is there any others? MRPC's committees too, but.
Charlie's on that one, right?
Well, so am I, but I don't think either one of us have had the opportunity to vote for the meeting.
Thankless jobs, I mean, it.
Can you just sign that copy for our record too?
Uh, well, we'll just stick to your, your facts at hand, so Dennis, all in fa- I, I make a motion to, um, have Dennis be the planning board rep on the open space committee?
No, committee, uh, community preservation.
Community preservation.
I second it.
All in favor? Alright. Anybody got any new business? Mallory, you good?
Just bear with me as I learn.
No, that's good.
Please. I've been putting together.
That was good, good preparation of the documents tonight. This is the one that is just here, so I'm gonna leave this in the file, cause I signed it back, I signed it when it's in the.
Okay.
In the thing now.
Beautiful.
Um, oh wait.
Those are for if Bunny's was all set for tonight.
What's that?
That was for the, if the site plan was all set for tonight.
Pardon the other one, okay, which they weren't, so, okay. Anybody in the new business?
Um, no, I guess we should try to be sure to have a. A quorum for next meeting. We have two site plan things, but.
Yeah, who's, uh, we just got, well, Kristoff and Charlie both, Kristoff did give notification that he would not be present tonight, I don't know about Charlie, but, with that being said, all in favor, let's, uh, motion adjourned?
Motion to move.
Okay, all in favor? We're done.